It's 5:30, time to call our meeting to order for Monday, September the 24th. Roll call please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Slate Hanson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonis.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leeson.
Here.
You're on us in a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertain a motion to approve last week's minutes.
Move.
Motion Olson, second by Johnson. If there are no changes or corrections, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. This is the appointed time for open forum. Mike McHugh is asked to speak at open forum, and Mike, we're not going to let you make a speech, but if you want to just introduce yourself and say why you're here, we got a lot of stuff to do tonight, so we're not going to listen to political speeches.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Leeson. Appreciate it. I just wanted to take a few minutes, introduce myself to the commission. I am a candidate for the House of Representatives in District Two, which does include a portion of southwest side of Aberdeen, and otherwise goes from Columbia to Castlewood. But just wanted to inform you that I was running. I would be very interested in if issues come before the legislature, if I was lucky enough to get elected, to work with city commissions. I'm going around and introducing myself to various commissions, county, city, and school boards, and just I'm a retired farmer from northeast of Aberdeen, was a cattle feeder for many years, and after school, graduated from Northern, met my wife there, Mary. We've been married 46 years and have four children and two grandchildren, so very interested in things going on in the education field for both K through 12 and through...
Mike, I said we're not going to have a political speech, all right? You're welcome to introduce yourself, but we're not going to start that. We'd be doing it every week, so...
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome here, and we hope you can stay and watch the fun here tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike, and go for southwest part of Aberdeen. I mean, they're the only representation that you will have in this election like every other election before.
Thank you.
Okay, that's our next item on the agenda is Old Business Ordinance 180801. Oh, I'm sorry. We have Paul McDonald and Shirley from the library here to talk to us about the library.
Thank you all. I'm on the library board, and since the library, the new facility was opened, there are voices in the community saying, for that kind of an investment, can we have access to the facility seven days a week, such as we have for Lee Park Golf Course, the Aquatic Center, Wally Park Storybook Land. And so we got a, we put together a small ad hoc team and spent several weeks looking at data, asking ourselves questions. Shirley and the leadership team put together a number of scenarios for scheduling, looking at the talent pool, looking at the numbers, and we put together a recommendation. We took that recommendation to the full library board, and it was unanimous to have a trial period for the library to be open on Sundays from December 1st through May 19th. And the new hours on the weekend for the library will be Saturdays 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and Sundays from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. No new additional money will be spent. It's in the budget as we understand it, and we just are pleased with the, I've had three meetings, Shirley and I have met three times with the staff members, so they are fully informed, and we, I think you do have an outline of our recommendation in your packet. And Shirley, any comments you'd like to add, but our recommendation's ready to roll forward.
You know, I commend you for making this. I know, I've talked to Shirley about this for years, I suspect, and I know that this is a difficult move, and there's probably some resistance from the staff, but I really commend you for going forward. This is what the public wants, and we are all servants of the public. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I think the numbers speak for themselves. Shirley has reported that the traffic at the new library, the old facility, the previous facility, for a year was about 150,000 guests, and not even a year into the new facility, and we've exceeded over 400,000 guest traffic.
Yeah, I would follow up on that. I'd commend you for this proposal. After the last time the presentation was given, you didn't get a lot of great feedback, not a lot of positive feedback, and I just appreciate you coming back and looking at all the details and bringing this proposal together. I think it's a good one, so thank you.
Lynn, I know you did a lot of work with this, too. You've been involved with this, and presuming this has your full support.
Certainly.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the council? Well, thanks. I know you've spent a lot of time on this. We sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
Come and see us on Sunday.
Okay.
Is that for the meal?
If you can, you can have the meal.
Now, we move to Old Business, and presented for, what, the fourth time?
Final adoption.
Oh, for possible final adoption, ordinance 180801, final adoption tonight unless there is a substantive amendment. I would entertain a motion for final adoption of 180801. Motion Bunsonis, second by Ronain. Questions or comments on final adoption vote? Roll call please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Took us a while, but...
No.
Ordinance 180902 is next, ordinance to lease airport property for hangar areas. And any changes on this since we passed last week?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Move approval.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second. Bunsonis then for final adoption of this one. Questions, anyone? Carl.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Item C, resolution that was postponed from last week related to the proposed vacation of public right-of-way of 15th Avenue. The reason for the postponement last week, primary reason was to get a report from Robin on their study of the traffic council. Let's start with that. Robin, tell us what you're doing there.
Okay, well, is, I think everybody's got it in front of them or did have. As you can see, our primary traffic is on State Street. 12th Avenue also has a fair, fairly large amount of traffic as well, at 3,200 vehicles per day. 15th Avenue, the one that's of concern for vacation, you can see that the peak volumes during the school year, which is our highest volume, would be eastbound from 8:00 to 9:00. In that 8 o'clock timeframe is about two vehicles going eastbound. And then the peak volumes in the afternoon would be westbound at about 79 vehicles a day. The one piece of confusion here, the normal average that you see, that 30 to 50, that's actually one direction, so you'd actually have to double that for a two-direction traffic volume, okay? It's obvious that the traffic is going to be displaced to other routes. It's hard to say the first few weeks what'll happen, but traffic will normalize and find their route at some point in time. Staff has talked about this. Our best guess right now is that up on 12th Avenue, you'll see volumes in that 3,500 range, maybe slightly higher per day, and then the rest of it will go down to 17th Avenue, which will put us, you know, up closer to 2,000 vehicles per day, probably.
Okay, before we entertain a motion on the proposal, questions about, of Robin, about the study? Any, from anyone? Had a week to look at? Okay. With that then, and again, prior to the motion, I would ask Ron to explain the motion for the vacation with the provisions that also were included from the planning commission.
Mayor, with your permission, I'm going to defer to Brett on that, but I do have the ability to pull that resolution up as he's talking about it. Robin, we switch over? Are you switched?
It's switched.
Oh, it's on, okay.
I'll go through and clarify what actually is being requested to be vacated. It's the entire 66 feet wide of 15th Avenue Southeast Public Right-of-Way, commencing at the west side of State Street South Public Right-of-Way and continuing west 525 feet. It's located between Northern State College Lot 3A and blocks 1 and 2 of Melgarde Park Edition. Okay, NSU is requesting to vacate their right-of-way in order to vacate a portion of 15th Avenue Southeast to allow for the expansion of the campus without having a public right-of-way separating the future sports complex from the rest of the existing property. This vacation of right-of-way is approved by the Aberdeen Planning Commission on August 21st with the following stipulations. The vacated right-of-way must be incorporated into the adjacent lots and future replating of the property. No permanent structures are to be constructed over the existing water and sewer lines within the current right-of-way unless they are constructed to span the right-of-way with a bottom height of 20 feet. A 66-foot-wide access easement must be maintained for all current utilities within that portion of 15th Avenue Southeast, and the green space south of the proposed parking lot and adjacent to Harret Street South and 17th Avenue Southeast must be paved and landscaped in order to provide for additional off-street parking. With that said, I do believe Robin has received plans for the easement itself and the 20 feet, which would be the bottom height of anything spanning the right-of-way, would be changed to 14 feet, and the 66-foot-wide access easement would be, as is shown on the current plans, because it varies throughout the plan.
The right-of-way as proposed by, and put together, and Ron's got it here now, by how many associates? 49 foot is what they're proposing through everything except the area kind of right off the west side of the building, which they're proposing to have a 30 to 35 foot is my understanding for their proposed right-of-way at that point. And how we're able to neck it down based on their plans would be to, in case, do a separate pipe outside of the water main and the sewer main so that those could be pulled out should there be a problem, so you don't have to re-excavate in that area, and that work, that the potential bridge that they would be putting over the top would be narrow enough so we can come in from each side and work to do excavation if we needed to do anything over the top of the storm sewer pipe. It's all doable within the engineering realm, and that was our thought. We didn't want to give somebody else a headache. Those things have been thought out, so it's doable now the way we've got it laid out.
Okay. You done?
I'm done.
Well, with that, then I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution as amended, or with the markups.
Second.
Second by Olson. Motion by Ronain. Tom Holbert is here, and he's available to answer questions if there are questions or objections to this. If there are not, we don't need him, I guess, but are there any objections or questions about the resolution?
I do. I have, so, two questions. One, in additional paved and landscaped off-street parking, can you explain to me exactly what it says? Because it doesn't have a number or an air... landscape, so can somebody explain to me, or Brett, explain to me exactly?
That was written so...
Okay.
Do you have a picture of the map?
Um, not in front of me, no. Is that in this?
Is it in the packet?
It is.
I can go to the packet, everybody.
Okay.
No, I think the proposed parking lot is a little different than what shows on this, if I'm, is that correct?
The proposed parking lot on, let me see what you're looking at here. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty close, but we're, I mean, we're still designing everything, but that's, you know, that's a fairly close interpretation of where we're at.
I thought I saw, oh, I saw a schematic rolling down a little bit, that the parking lot was more towards, in line with the, the end of the parking lot was more in line with the end of the football field, which would make it closer to the roadway. If you scroll down just a little bit further, maybe I'm looking at this a little, go up from, is it up, or is, keep going down?
Yeah, they're down.
Right there. So if you go down, you see the parking lot that you have drawn here. I don't know who did this drawing, but it seems like that is in line with, which is a little different than what the top view that we just saw. I don't know. I'm just asking the question whether...
Yeah, that's a little bit earlier drawing, because it's just a little bit earlier drawing.
Okay.
Similar, but, yep.
The other drawing is more accurate.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess my question is then, we're not putting anything specific here, just the fact that there has to be some parking there. Are we in agreement on that? It's generic enough? Okay. So, and I'm, and I'm good with that. So then, I guess my question for Mr. Holbert and Dr. Downs is, what if we don't do this tonight? What if this does not pass? Where, where will NSU go? How will you reconfigure the drawings to be able to use that space if 15th doesn't get vacated?
Thank you, and thanks for having us. Appreciate it. Thanks for consideration of this. The, if this project, if 15th Street weren't vacated, for example, the stadium and the complex would move down, the softball field would move to the west, so parking would be, some parking would necessarily be eliminated as a result of that. One other scenario would be that, right now, we're hoping that the Barnett Center itself will become one of the primary entries, the concourse from the north, making almost 500 parking spaces accessible from the north. If the stadium moves to the south and 15th Street weren't vacated, you know, hopefully people would still park on that north side, but it might not be quite as convenient to park up there. They might, some of those people might move and find other areas to park to access the stadium around the neighborhood.
So basically, it would go back to the original plan? Is that how it would look if 15th wasn't vacated? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, you know, original plan, our original proposal when we submitted included moving this to the north, so there was some schematic master planning ideas that showed it further south. That's true.
Okay. So all the, all the video that we saw was really your first plan?
That wasn't my plan.
Okay.
What you saw with the video and the website was just the first blush of the campus master plan, which didn't have the stadium connected to the Barnett Center, which meant the softball field was in the southwest quadrant, which means you couldn't use it for anything but the softball field.
So any other, any other questions on the motion?
Right now, there's three handicap stalls on 15th Avenue on the south side. That's for the Barnett Center. Where are you going to relocate those to?
We could add more convenient, accessible parking in the Barnett Center parking lot for the Barnett Center if there's more required. We'll do a full code check on parking, and we'll also have accessible parking in the, available for the football stadium as well. We'll make sure that there's plenty of that. Thank you.
And, and I guess, you know, I have a question on, you know, the green space, you know, adding additional parking. What is additional parking? You know, to me, I, I think you need a win in this neighborhood, and as much parking as you could provide would be beneficial, because this neighborhood, even during Barnett Center, which is great, but now you're adding six more events, more parking is beneficial. Whether, you know, yeah, you have to the north, but you can go to any event and that northern parking lot is full. You added more parking to Johnson Fine Arts Center. If it was me, I would love to see that whole green area, except for maybe some trees and all that to the south for wind blockage, as much parking as possible. Because, like you say, this, this neighborhood will feel the brunt of this effect, and you could sit there and say, you know, people are going to park where it's easily accessible. And you can see that even on 15th now, I drove by right before here, there's not a spot to be had on that street. Every day you go by there, it is full of people parking on that street, and most of them are not only northern employees, but northern students as well. And they will have to go somewhere, and many of them probably will not buy a parking pass because they're not doing it now. And I know we've had to make some changes that may overbe due to that fact as well.
David, you had your hand up or not?
No, I was pointing to David.
Oh, okay, David.
Back to the parking again, obviously, with Clint on this, it's, you know, in the neighborhood, it's, that's the big topic, as far as I'm concerned, anyway. And if we're leaving this wide open, how do we, I mean, I don't see that we make any agreement or any, something from you to say that, yeah, you plan on making some more, or you're not, or what are your plans? I know it's recommended, but I don't see a resolution.
Sure. We're constantly looking for new opportunities for parking. One of the things that's happened this year is the students living in the residence halls, Wolf Memorial Suites, Great Plains East and West, and Steel Hall, we've been moving them to the west, to the Washington Street parking lot. So 500 permits were available for students, and that's 440 beds, so there's more permits than there are students. So we're trying to move the residential parking over to the west, and then the faculty-staff are using the Barnett Center and the Johnson Fine Arts Center. And typically, for events, those people leave, and then they may come back, but they'd have to bid for parking like everyone else. So we're trying to make the parking open as much as possible for the evening events.
Right, but what I'm asking is, in the, in the proposal, it was left open for us to hash out what was going to happen to that green area, but I'm not sure what, we're coming to any type of agreement, or what your pledge might be, or anything like that.
Right, and I was getting to that.
Okay, sorry.
So, one of the points that was brought up recently was, if you vacate 15th Avenue, you lose some spaces that were on 15th Avenue. I think a good thought would be to add the same number of spaces into the northwest quadrant parking area, so you're not losing the spaces on 15th. And then we're also in the process right now of acquiring other property. One piece of property that's been very much underutilized is on the west side of the Newman Center. That lot was in a state of disrepair, and nobody parked in it. Well, just this month, we finished repairing that lot, so now people can park in it, and it's right there in that sector for the students, for residence halls, as well as it's only a block away from the Barnett Center. So we're constantly looking for pieces of property. There's a piece of property that we're in the process of acquiring right now, just northeast of Briscoe Hall on 12th. It's the burned-out building, which has now been taken down today. We're purchasing that property, and we're going to turn that into a parking lot, which gives us relief on the north end, so students that live in Briscoe Hall can park there. So we're constantly looking for creating the right number of parking spaces for residents, for faculty and staff, as well as visitors to campus on a regular basis.
Would you consider taking some of that green, green space away to add a little more parking on the, well, the south of the current, what you're proposing here on this, in the parking area, and reduce some of that green space for parking?
That's exactly the study that we're looking at. The current green space that goes from 15th to 17th down along Harret, the first, the northwest quadrant, the cost to actually put curb and gutter and parking is $1.1 million. And that doesn't include the additional costs of $239,000 to bury the electrical lines. So we're talking at a total cost estimate of $1.3 million. And we're trying to maintain a green space, because as you know, we're embedded in town, which is good, but it's a challenge, and the less green space we have, it's very difficult for us to have a lot of activities on campus, clubs and organizations, students using the land. It's, and then there's also an environmental impact issue. If you put asphalt over everything, it creates a higher heat index for that neighborhood, which is, which is not really good.
It's good in the winter, though, isn't it?
We have a lot of people standing on this long parking lot, heating up, absolutely, and thought of it that way.
Are some of these other fields, like the practice field, going to be utilized for other intermural sports and those types of things, or are you just relying on that green space?
Well, we'll need all of it, because students, the band needs a place to practice. There's other clubs, like the rugby club, that want to practice there. We can sustain a softball field. There's a dugout or a backstop there. We'd like to keep something like that for the neighborhood as well, for the children in that neighborhood to have a green space to go to and play. If everything becomes a parking lot, it really boxes us in, and it doesn't have the flexibility that we prefer.
Robin.
You know, I know that, I know that the issues that Clint has brought up and Dave is passionate about, I know that they are issues in that neighborhood. You know, I appreciate and have confidence that we can rely on you to, to work out the parking issue, work out the green space issue. We know that you're hearing not just from the city council, you're hearing from people in the neighborhood, and I know you're, you're trying to be responsive to them, and I, and I appreciate that. I'm satisfied with, with your responses and with the way that the resolution is drafted thus far.
I think that's a good point. From a practical point of view, Dr. Downs and the people at Northern don't want to spend the next five or 10 years taking phone calls from people angry about parking. You'll do, you'll do what you have to do, and you have a history of working with us on it, and I'm confident that good faith's going ahead.
Just to clarify, you know, I hear rumors, like all of you, we have no plans for that green space for a building. So I don't know where that came from. Maybe somebody made it up, and three people repeated it, and suddenly it became this, this rumor that there was a building already planned. There is not.
God, I have a couple of questions. I appreciate that. My wife pointed out, she was reading a three-year-old paper, a four-year-old paper, and it said in there that Northern had no interest in the school for visually handicapped either, so, I mean, things do change over time. So, do you, Dr. Downs, do you have any concerns with any of these conditions?
In terms of the easement and the overhead and...
Right, and number four, the parking?
I think that we can continually have dialogue about the parking to make sure that we're not having an adverse impact on the neighborhood, because we want to be good neighbors, we want to be good partners with the city, absolutely.
So my question...
Just to clarify, the reason why we weren't showing an interest in the school for the blind is because the premise that was originally presented to me when I came to town was to shoo the school for the blind out of town and, and take their land. I didn't feel that that was a good neighborly approach. That's why when we had the opportunity to vacate and demolish Jersey Hall and go into a fundraising campaign and include the school for the blind and build them a new building, and with that building, then the governor has approved to do the land exchange, I felt much better about that proposition for all parties concerned.
Most definitely, most definitely. So my question is, what does number four mean? I mean, I think that's maybe what Councilmember Lunsman was trying to get at. If, if there's nothing to this condition, because everyone seems to be skirting around the fact that it, it seems to me that that requires them to pave south of the, the existing or the, the parking lot that you show on the plan.
David, it does, unless, unless some other, and I think what they're saying is, they may come to us with another proposal saying, we've got this ground, but we've got them, we've got them where Dave Lunsman wants them, unless they come up with something better.
And one other thing to consider, too, is it's going to take a couple of years to build that stadium, and that particular part of that property is almost certainly going to be used as a staging area for building that stadium, so the idea that that's going to be ready to be paved in 12 months from now really is, really is...
No, no, I...
So, so the dynamics of the whole situation down there, I, I'm going to trust in the good faith if I'm still here and everybody's still, that I, I trust him on this.
No, I was, I was confused by this conversation. It seemed to be going all over the place. So do you, do you envision at any time using that green space for overflow parking, if
It, it's possible to do that, but we'd have to do it in a responsible way, to make sure that it, it wasn't a swamp. And we'd have to make sure that as people leave, uh, Mr. Hurlbert has informed me of different ways that you can ingress and egress out of a, a lot like that. You can have different mechanisms that make sure that there's not a lot of mud and dirt that gets dragged out of the facility. Uh, maybe you could, could refer to that.
I think, uh, I think it would be helpful if, for five games a year, you could have that be, uh, great overflow and, uh, and tailgating, but if, if the city felt like that that was, uh, adverse, I think that Northern would be willing to, you know, listen to that. But the idea that that could be a really attractive, uh, temporary parking space, then it stays green throughout the year, but you use it for those overflow football events. And there's examples at SDSU, USD, and most of the large universities around the country where they have utilized, maintained green spaces as overflow traffic for five or six days a year. Now, in the event that there's five inches of rain, you'd have to, you'd have to say no deal. But if it's a well-maintained grass that will hold, uh, soil, then that will have no problem, uh, holding up for five times a year you're parking on it. And, and as Dr. Downs mentioned, there are some, uh, techniques you can use, different pads that you can use at the entry points that can help knock down mud. But Northern's been a, you know, they maintain their campus exceptionally well. They have no interest in having a mud pit around here, that's bad for their image, and their image is incredibly important to them.
Do you envision that area being a place where you place snow?
That, that is a critical factor for us as we, you know, get our skiff loaders full of snow. That's one, one reason we need it in, in the winter, absolutely.
So that's, that's one of the places that we, we get complaints. Um, I, I have, I guess I haven't heard them recently, but that some of those, uh, neighbors in that area seem to think that they, they get, uh, a higher water table because of that snow being placed there.
The, the new, the new parking lot will have a lot of drainage that goes into the Fifteenth Street drain, and that's part of our design and our intent.
And I would put forward that, you know, working with Helms, we could make sure that that space uh, drains adequately so that it works better for a parking space, but also has the appropriate retainage and detention that can help in, in that regard as well, so working with the city, well, we can make that as, as functional as possible.
Do you have any plans, um, in your plan to, uh, keep any remnants of the school for the people that, uh, that have lived there all their life and are, you know, experienced only that school through touch, or smell, or some other sense?
The, the school for the blind has had some of those conversations where they could have somewhat of a time capsule or pieces uh, from the existing school and build them into the new school. That has been brought up.
But nothing on the, on the, on the property that will have the, the football field and the, and the, um, softball field?
We, we could have some sort of plaque dedicating the space and to our partnership, I think that's a, a good idea.
I thought it was, you know, talking to an individual that's gone to school there, I thought, you know, I never thought of that, that's, it's an important thing to them, so, I mean, I, I would appreciate if you would take a look at that.
One of the thoughts about a green space is even for big events, or we could have, uh, people that maybe aren't even using vehicles, but you could have all kinds of activities down there that are for pregame. You could have bounce castles, you could have people coming and setting up small tents, and just really being a pavilion of people that are sharing with each other, uh, pregame, postgame. Maybe it's a Wolf Dog or Three, but it's just really creating a sense of community, and that space would really help us do that.
So going into that green space, it sounds like, yeah, it's overflow parking, but you're also going to do tailgating, and you're also going to have it for events, you're also going to have it for intramural things. Really, I don't think you guys have a plan for that. Everything, yeah, it's a green space, but it sounds like you're going to try and do a lot in that green space, more than just overflow parking. And I guess for me, you know, what, how big a space does all that entail? How many more parking spots are we going to get?
I can answer that.
Okay.
I, I think you've hit it on the head, the idea is that it, it is a multipurpose space, uh, that would be the most valuable way to use it. Um, right now, the way we've got it designed, we can fit, um, depends on, on how we lay them out, but they'll have to have somebody that helps lay them out. But if you do fifteen-foot-wide stalls and still allow about twenty to twenty-five feet wide for additional, um, kind of tailgating areas, if you wanted to do that, you could still have well over two hundred, and you could have about well over two hundred and fifty, depending on how you lay them out, but we're, I'm showing, when I lay it out with, uh, fifteen-foot-wide stalls, just because, obviously, it gets harder to park close together when you're, you have to kind of have people help navigate that, right? But, but your point is taken, they can be exactly all of those things. It's not that it's not planned, it's that it's planned to be as functional and flexible as possible. And I, I think that's one of the reasons Northern loves the idea of having a green space.
Just to also put this in numbers, you know, closing this, you know, may only sound like a thousand to thirteen hundred cars a day. That's four hundred and fif- four hundred and fifty thousand cars per year that use this stretch of road. Not only that, there's people who at Northern park there every day, every day it is full. Um, and we can sit there and conjecture what those cars will do. But in talking to some people, the quickest way will be to cut through the Barnett Center. So, I mean, like, like you say, just so you know that, I mean, you have a public school right across the way. Not, not everyone is probably as thoughtful as they should be in wake up and enough time, or, you know, we all have kids. Uh, sometimes they don't wake up, sometimes they're a little slow eating breakfast. This, this could be a problem for the safety of people going to and from their classes as people are darting through. Because this probably, um, like you say, that's four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand cars a year that use this road, and a thousand in the summer. That's local traffic, Northern employees, Northern students who are using this, this road. So, um, like I say, for, for me, it's, it's really comes down to, as much parking as you could do, you need a win in this neighborhood on both sides. Because, you know, the Barnett Center is a great thing, um, but, like I say, there have already been changes in this neighborhood because of the stuff that has gone on, you need, like I say, as much as you can do, you need a big win.
Any other comments, Mark?
Yeah, I, you know, I did get some pushback on this last week. But I, after listening to everything tonight, uh, I'm going back to my original thought on this, is that when we changed the traffic flow on Eighth Avenue Northeast, I got so many calls about how that's not going to work, it's not going to work, it's just, it, it's going to be jammed up forever, and, uh, it's just not going to work. Well, it has worked, people got used to it, and, uh, they found either different routes, or they just kept using the same route and, uh, figured out how to use it better, I, I'm not sure. But, the, I look at this as the same thing, that, you know, it, people will get used to it. And in a year from now, or a year after we have this closure on it, nobody's even going to be talking about it. That's just, that's my take on it, just, yes, comparing it to Eighth Avenue Northeast.
Yeah, well, and I got those same calls on Eighth Avenue Northie- Northeast, but we didn't close it permanently. Um, and that's a huge difference, is we didn't close Eighth Avenue per, we made it similar to what every other street Roosevelt and that is in the
We closed two lanes.
But we actually added a right churn lane and made a churning lane in the middle to where it made it more efficient.
But we did close two lanes.
Yeah, but we added a churn lane, so we didn't close two lanes, so.
I, I would just like to let you know that I did the math after last week's mayor's, uh,
Brought you calculator.
Accurate, uh, two hundred million sales tax, I did them, Clint's a little short in his number.
I was conservative, I was trying, I was learning from Dave and being conservative in my numbers.
So are we, uh, are we ready to vote on this? I believe we are. This is a, uh, required two-thirds vote, which, uh, will mean that would require six, uh, positive votes to pass here. Uh, so Carl, roll call, please, a yes vote is a vote to vacate Fifteenth Avenue. Carl?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronan?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Bunstness?
No.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
No.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye, motion passes, get to work.
Can I just make a quick comment on that? Thank you very much. I mean, I, I started out not being supportive of the, the football fields coming, um, to the new location. Quickly, uh, heard your message, Dr. Downs, and I, and I believe it with all my heart that we need, something needed to happen, and I, I appreciate your vision. Um, so, and was one of the first to jump on board of the five million dollar contribution to Northern. So, you know, by no means does my vote no here mean that I'm not a very big supporter of your, your vision for Northern, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, we, we will continue to be good partners to come up with all the best solutions possible. We appreciate the city's support and, uh, partnership, including fiscally, thank you.
My, my thing is, is, you know, um, you know, I'm not against the plan. If you, if you would have brought the plan you had in your pictures initially, I'd be jumping up and down. Because I thought that was such a great plan, and with this change, it made it a little unpalatable, but I'm not against what you're doing. You've done a lot of great things, and you know what, there's a lot of great construction going on there. Uh, your new residence halls are outstanding, um, and, uh, the new football stadium will, will be too, as well as your new science building, so.
Thank you. So we, uh, we don't have very much, uh, in our agenda yet, but those of you who are here for this item are free to go if you don't want to join us for the rest. Thanks for being here. How many years do we kick off in the new stadium, Tom?
Yeah, there's the pressure.
All right, next item on our agenda is our consent calendar, there is an adjustment to the consent calendar, there were, there are two taxi cab driver, uh, licenses listed there, the, uh, taxi company that submitted those requests have asked to withdraw those. So numbers three and four under licenses, uh, take those away, and then I'd entertain a motion for what's left.
Move approval, second.
Motion, Rux, and second by Bunstness, questions on any? All in favor of approving, then say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Uh, under new business, item six, Robin Mill and Overlay.
Okay, the, uh, Mill and Overlay project went very well, I do have one minor correction I'm going to have make on it, on the overpass, but other than that, the project went really well this year. Uh, probably the only snafu is how much work we had, additional work we had to do on, uh, North State Street for the curb and gutter, uh, and then the, uh, change order, if you take a look at change order number two, you will see a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars additionally asked for the, um, work done on the overlay portion, uh, that was a typo in our specifications, so there, the plan showed one quantity, the specification showed another. It's not costing the city any additional money, it's just, we have to change order that to be appropriate with the quantities we actually use.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Ronan, second, Bunstness, uh, the, uh, consequent payment after the change order is to lean construction the amount of five hundred and twenty-three dollars, seven, it's five hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. Questions on the motion? Carl?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronan?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye, motion carries, and item B is the sex accessible quadrants, Robin?
Okay, we're, we've got a change order in here that's going to look a little sizable, too. And that was in the, um, we had the footage calculated, and we added one word in here, which was inch foot, so we're going depth times length on this particular bit item. The depth was not included in that bit item, so we're eight times more than we should be. So, uh, with that said, uh, the change order for twenty-three thousand, two ninety-seven, and the, uh, request for payout, uh, CWF in the amount of forty thousand, four twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Olson, second by Ronan, questions, anyone? Carl?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronan?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye, motion carries, and item C for you, Robin, Eighth Avenue Northwest work.
Okay, the, uh, pay request here, uh, two hundred and eighteen thousand to get this close, I think we're down to one percent retainage on it, the, uh, change order in the amount of forty-one thousand, four ninety-four, and that was due to some wall work and some of the landscaping stuff we did long the old two eighty-one portion to make it look better, uh, we did some fencing and things like that.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, uh, Rux, and, uh, second by Lunsman, and this is two hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars to reed construction, uh, any questions?
Yeah, um, we have that short section of bike path where the power poles are, that connects, uh, old, uh, one part to Northwest Eighth Avenue, the other. Do we still have any plans to finish that, have we, with Northwestern?
Northwestern is planning, this is just, just to the west of
When we put in the right
Turn in the corner.
Yeah, when we put in the right churn lane, we, yeah.
Right across from Bonn Express. The Northwestern still does have plans to do that work this fall, they just don't know when. And so we figured we'd put it in, uh, as far as we could, and as soon as they get those, the self-supporting structure out of our way, we will install that, it may be next spring, though.
Yeah, I, I had a couple of people ask when that was going to be finished, and
Yeah, we've, we were hoping that they would have it completed by the time we were done with that section, but they're not, so we'll just have to wait for finishing that little piece up.
Since we're really not talking about payment, you know, I'd also tell you that, that when I, when I
Could I have called the question?
When I've driven that, uh, on my bike, you know, that really, really low part on, uh, right next to Lee Park, that ought to be raised, that is, that is going to be underwater a hundred days a, a year, not a hundred.
Well, we have regraded the ditch on the south side so that the water can run.
When, when did you do that?
Uh, last week.
Oh, then I, I need to write it again?
Okay, the, the other thing
I'll draw the comment.
The other thing that happens on that, as we took a look at the, the culvert to the, further to the east, I don't know why, but they've got a big hump in that culvert, so based on the, the elevations that we've got on the ends, it should work, but you look into the middle and there's a rise in that culvert. So we may end up having to replace the culvert in order to make it work right.
Just put a bridge over it.
Actually, there, there was, with, with a certain amount of fill, it probably would make more sense, and that may be, if, if this just doesn't work out, we may have to go in and, and run over the top and extend the culvert, so.
Rob rides a bike?
I was, I was more interested in, in the application of his engineering degree. Trump University, maybe. Uh, we've got a motion and a second to make the payment, Carl?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronan?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye, motion carries, bills presented for payment tonight, Northwest Energy, twenty-four thousand, ninety-five. Uh, AMT cleaning for additional cabin cleaning, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. Fuel charges for ambulances to Fleet, two fifty-eight, uh, the bid assessment, revenue dispersment, five oh eight. CVB occupancy tax for August, revised number there is thirty-four thousand, five nineteen. South Dakota One Call, uh, locates, four twenty-five, Fredericksen Law Offices, Services for Water Rights and Permit, three hundred dollars. Uh, payment, uh, for conference expenses for Amanda Fisher, sixty-six dollars, and to Peggy Badton, three hundred and forty-three dollars. UPS charges of one forty-six. Uh, stream gauging maintenance done by, uh, DOI US Geological Survey, nineteen thousand, four eighty. Verizon phone charges, thirty-one, and utility account refunds, three fifty-seven.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Bunstness, second by Olson, questions on any? Carl?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronan?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye, motion carries, Lynn?
Okay, now, thank you, I have, uh, three different memorandums within the manager's packet, I would like to highlight two of them this evening. Uh, the first one, I'm actually going to read a paragraph out of the memorandum that I did, and it deals with IPOS, because I think it's very important that you understand what capabilities we have now. The City of Aberdeen recently purchased a module from Civic Plus, which is our website carrier, and it's called Civic Ready. Civic Ready is a mass emergency notification system that integrates with the federal emerg- Civic Ready is a mass emergency notification system that integrates with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which is commonly called FEMA. FEMA created and integrated Public Alert and Warning System, IPAS, in 2006. IPAS is a notification tool that allows authorized users, such as Aberdeen now, to connect to the IPAS platform to send alerts to cell phones, local TVs, and radio broadcasts, can even post notifications to digital road signs in various other locations instantaneously. IPAS enables the city to reach as many people as possible, including citizens and visitors, who have not opted into our notification system by phone, email, or other communications. The City of Aberdeen started the application process in May of 2017 and became an IPAS user later in August of 2018. And so, this will be a new system where we can use our emergency alert system using AM/FM satellite radio, or we can go to the commercial mobile alert system, which is mobile devices, which would be like an iPhone, or we can go the National Weather Service All Hazards Emergency Message Collection System. So, we'll have the ability now in a warning or emergency system to contact anyone, even if they're not opt within our present website system.
I'm guessing snow plowing doesn't count for that, right?
No, doesn't qualify either for emergency or warning. The next item I would like to make reference to, and I did a short memorandum, and Bob Brown wanted to be here, our water treatment director, but he had a conflict. I gave you a short memorandum, just giving you an update on our water wells and groundwater expansion project. We are nearing completion of what we call our Phase One work with analysis of our existing infrastructure. We believe with some slight modifications, we can increase the volume of our existing infrastructure. Now, we're going to move into Phase Two, and Phase Two is looking at infrastructure outside the city's ownership at this time. And so, we'll be looking at other sources. And I think I listed two potential sources within my memorandum. One would be web. One would be other locations within the vicinity that would be somewhat nearby our existing infrastructure system. That's all I have at this time. Thank you for the opportunity.
Anyone else? Dave?
8th Avenue Northeast, very nice ride up there. So, great job. Leans did a great job.
I see they have started cutting for concrete road improvements. Have any ideas on when the numerous curb and gutter in many neighborhoods will be taken care of?
So, we should see most of those go away over the next week or week and a half.
Okay.
The intent is not to delay those portions, but they did want to make sure that they were addressing some of the roadway stuff as well, so.
Because, you know, it's almost October.
Yep.
So.
No.
Anyone else before we leave? Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, Johnson, second by Bunsonus to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. We adjourn.